The first item that we will take out of order is item five, Governing Board. Five point one, assumption of office of governing board member. And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Miller if he can join me over to the left. So this is your oath of office. I make my statement. I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
So I will swear that I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
He would so graciously be of support to trustee Miller during his first year.
I would be invited.
And that can entail and look at in whatever which way is most convenient to him.
This guy has a great man cave.
Oh, well, there you go.
I don't know how I know that, but.
A what?
Man cave.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, I do that. Did we discuss my feet, please?
And so, yes, please feel free to reach out to, you know, any of us. But Mr. Trustee Houseman will be your go-to for a year and many, many more years should he choose to.
Yeah, I think maybe, we'll see in November.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'll still be around.
We have a lease on these seats until November.
Good. Okay, so that takes us to item two point two, roll call, and all trustees are present except for Vice President Abud, which he should find his way because I myself was across the campus. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us at this venue. And item two point four, recognitions, and Dr. Bebe.
Yes, thank you. I have something that I would like to present. We have a lot of people at Santa Barbara City College that win all kinds of awards.
How rich is?
How appropriate.
There's Jonathan. That win all kinds of awards and certainly programs that win awards. But we also have a great deal of people who work very hard every day and do a spectacular job that are not looking for an award, maybe not be in a position to receive an award, but deserve an award. And these folks are not looking for the limelight. As a matter of fact, many of these individuals prefer to step back and be in the background and let the light shine on others. And in many ways, these individuals are the glue that holds all of the college together. And they operate under kind of a life philosophy of serving the college and looking to serve the college rather than to be served by the college or people at the college. And they go out of their way to do an outstanding job and many times perform their work above and beyond the call of duty. And we like to think of these individuals as everyday heroes. And we have a have an everyday hero among us today in Angie Escada, who is a who is an everyday hero. And Angie, for those of you that do not know, is the executive assistant to the superintendent president and she is the executive assistant to the board. She's been at the college for eighteen years. She was hired by Dr. Peter McDougal. And over that eighteen years, she tells me that she's trained six college presidents. Not sure how successful on each one of those, but I know I'm a work in progress for her. But she's also worked with dozens of trustees in her role. She is incredibly organized and manages all of the matters of the superintendent president office, the communications that go through there, the paperwork that goes through there. She supervises the college switchboard operators that you may not know. She's also in charge of campus mail distribution, all of the trustee meeting agendas and minutes that she puts together. She just has a tremendous workload and this is really just part of it. I didn't want to get into all of it because it's just too much. But Angie, for all of these reasons and so many others, I want to give you this Everyday Hero Award.
Thank you. You know, I didn't like to speak, but, yeah, it's been a great pleasure working in the president's office and for all of the trustees and the college community. So, thank you very much.
I need to be able to stand in and take a picture.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. She is a support in seven people. I don't think we're very maintenance, but I think we kind of can be sometimes. So, thank you.
Seven eagles at college.
So that brings us to public comment, three point one.
I don't have any.
Okay. Item four point one, minutes of the regular meeting of January eighteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. It's been motioned second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January eighteen, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item five, Governing Board. We did that. Reports. Item six. Six point one, report of sabbatical outcomes. Aaron O'Connor.
All right. So, let's see. There's that. Hello, everybody. I'm Aaron O'Connor. I teach in Earth and planetary sciences. Teach astronomy mostly. And so, thank you. Yeah, that's great. That helps me. So, my presentation's a bit visual, so it's nice to have legs down. I was on sabbatical for a year and it was, I'd have to say, it was the probably, you know, I would have to say it was the most significant professional development activity of my life. It was a huge undertaking and endeavor. I wanted to do something that you can't do amongst your day-to-day life. So I wanted to go to Europe and I wanted to explore a lot of the historical sites that are related to astronomy that I teach about in my classes. I wanted to go firsthand and, you know, visit Einstein's house and see the clock that inspired him and to, you know, visit these countries where a lot of the astronomy began. And so, I explored astronomical observatories, science and astronomy organizations in universities in Europe. I visited museums and historical sites and also researched the historical characters that I teach in my classes. I did two things, not only to build up my knowledge and my stories and my narrative that I present to my classes, but also to explore possibilities for study abroad programs that I could help develop here at the school, either for short term, over summers and things, or longer term, like a semester. So, I kind of mixed in some fun slides with some of the kind of heavier science slides. But what I did is I took my entire family to live in Europe. And so, there was this huge adventure in trying to get them over to Europe. Like rent out my house. I had to, I had no job. You know, basically, I had no job. I had no visas at first. Three days before I was supposed to leave, they hadn't given me a visa to stay there. I, so anyways, but pulled it all together, got over there, ended up in France. I chose to live in France because I wanted to travel to all the neighboring countries where a lot of the history is and is centrally located. I have some family history in that area, too, so that's what I wanted to do. And so, I took my wife and my two kids. And so, this is where we lived for a year. It was a very different experience for us. It was beautiful. It's also a scientific center of Europe. I'll show some of the things that are going on there, but many, many scientists live in Grenoble, which is in the French Alps region, and they're there for science reasons. And one of the reasons I moved there was it was the only, one of the few places I could find an international school for my kids. And I found out later, the reason there's an international school is because of the thousands of scientists from all over the world that are there. So, actually, it worked out quite well. Life was very different for my family. We lived in the city. Currently, I live kind of in the country with chickens and we got bees on our property. And weed whacking, you know, we lived in a giant, fifth floor of a giant building. We had no car. We took the tram around. My kids drank wine and thought they were really, you know, like they got the system beat and they're Instagramming all their friends. We ate well, you know? So, this was my daily meal there. I joined the band, you know, just because I'm having my midlife crisis and it's time to, you know, try that. So, I think you guys can hear the whole song when you're, how is this working? There we go. Oh, no, it's upside down. So, but then, and we traveled a lot. And that's where I'm going to talk about the science. So this is what it's like to travel with two teenage kids. They just were having trouble adjusting to the train there, as you can see. So what did we do? So, one of the trips that we did was down into northern Italy because that's where Galileo, you know, was from and did some of his things. And we also traveled through England, Scotland, and Ireland because of the history, a lot of Stonehenge, going way back to Stonehenge, things like that. Traveled up into, you know, Normandy, Brittany areas, the tides, the extreme tides that have to do with the moon. And then we did a really big trek all through Switzerland, Germany, the Czech Republic, Denmark, Sweden, back down through Belgium and Holland and all that, too. So, we went places and did stuff. This was a working trip, even though it's a grand adventure for me. In Grenoble itself, I guess that it's a scientific center. There's the European Synchrotron Radiation Facility with some eight thousand scientists visiting every year from twenty-two countries, two thousand experiments, producing eighteen hundred scientific papers. I would ride my bike past this place like every day. That was my daily bike ride. And so, it was pretty neat to do that. Really advanced, you know, this is the most significant X-ray facility in the world, is my understanding. And right next door to it is this facility, which has the most intense neutron source in the world. And so, a lot of science going on there. Also, not necessarily my field, but the European Molecular Biology Laboratory. This is a field trip that my kids' school took the kids to. It was in an American school that was part of an international school. So I got to participate and see some of that. In terms of astronomy, there's the institute, you know, basically, you know, radio astronomy institute was centered in Grenoble as well. But that was just in Grenoble where I was living. So then, the system in Europe for kids is different. Every six weeks, they get two weeks off. So, this was our two-week little trip to explore a few things. Stopped off at the Expo two thousand and fifteen, so that was pretty significant. Went to the Leaning Tower of Pisa, where Galileo grew up as a child. And I put together a silly little video on dropping things off of the Leaning Tower of Pisa to share with my classes, and it's a little silly, but it's. And I'll get some later. But for now, we must reproduce the famous experiment that Galileo did four hundred years ago when he dropped a feather off of the Leaning Tower of Pisa. This is the feather. And he showed, he showed that things that are light drop at the same rate as things that are heavy. So we're going to walk over here to the side of the tower. And we're going to, and we're going to drop the feather. Ta-da! Wow. That's just a little clip, but I put together some silly stuff. I find that if I engage my classes with stories and kind of like show them that science is cool, that you can go places, do things, you know, the eclipse is a great example. You know, go travel, go places and do stuff, that it really excites people. And so, I try to tap into that. This is the Galileo Museum. These are Galileo's telescopes. This is actually his finger and his tooth. I'm not, you know, it turns out there's a whole story about why they have his finger and his tooth there. There's me and Galileo hanging out. See, I tell my students I hung out with Galileo. I went exploring, looking for the famous villa where Galileo was placed under house arrest till the end of his days after being excommunicated from the church. And so, the signs in Italian were a little tricky. I'm trying to drive a car like through these little streets, trying to find the place. And I found it and it was pretty exciting. It's not open to the public, but I actually found it. And, you know, you can lock me up there for the rest of my days anytime. It's beautiful. So it was kind of fun. So, real quick, let's see, we did a, I went to England. England is incredible international center. There's the Natural History Museum, the science museums there are just incredible. I'm going to go quickly through these slides. I just want to just show that the content of my trip. If you'd like to talk to me more about, you know, the specifics, but I know you guys have other things to do. This is Greenwich International Date Mine. You know, half my body is on the western hemisphere, half's on the eastern hemisphere, and I've been trying to pull it together ever since. So, Stonehenge, I mean, my gosh, you know, these alignments that symbolize the nineteen-year processional cycle of the moon, of course, the calendar, the solstices, a lot to have to do there. Went to Ireland, never been to Ireland, you know, it's my roots, you know, maybe, I don't know, the pub there, I'm not sure. Went to Scotland. They have interesting perspectives on education, I found. This is some of the signs I saw in front of the house. Had to look for the Loch Ness Monster, you know, there's some kind of science there, pseudoscience. There's a lot of discussions in my classes about pseudosciences and, you know, astrology. One of the common, actually, pretty surprising, but common mistake that students make is they say, "Oh, Mr. O'Connor, I took your astrology class." And I'm like, "Oh, I'm glad to remember so much." They often say, "My favorite part was the cosmetology." And I'm all, "Thank you." So, and of course, astronomy and cosmology. Of course, many of you don't realize that Dumbledore, you know, in England, by the way, the studios for the Harry Potter movies, but Dumbledore himself had a telescope. There it is. This is the telescope. It was actually the most, one of the most expensive props ever created for the show. And it actually played quite a minor role, you know, by the time they were done with editing. But they had actually invested quite a bit in this prop, this big telescope that was part of Dumbledore's thing. And then, just to be silly, I have these little videos. So here's my daughter flying around. That was me. So we flew around, checked things out there. So, another important little trip that we took was to Normandy, Paris, Normandy and Brittany. Normandy in particular because of the extreme tidal ranges and, of course, tides have to do with the moon. All of you should be very familiar with the blood-blue supermoon that we just had, first one in a hundred and fifty years here. I don't know if you saw, they came and went to my class and interviewed me at the last minute on the night of the super-blue blood moon. But it has, and tides, of course, are a big part of that. So here's, in Normandy, you've got boats that literally sit on the ground at low tide and then they come up. There's Mont Saint Michel, which is an island, you know, at high tide and yet you could walk to it at low tide. They actually have this sign when you drive out there that says, "If you park here, your car may be underwater in a few hours," you know? But of course, you have to speak French. If you don't speak French, you may not figure that out. Went to some caves. Astronomy is also the study of the earth. Earth is a planet. And there's, this particular character here has some history with the college. This is Zippy Connell, a son of Joseph Connell, taught in biology, son of Joseph Connell Senior, who taught for many years in drafting and things like that. So, three generations of Connells that were involved with the City College. So he's a student, a former student of mine. He's now in a PhD program at Santa Cruz and I keep in touch with him. He came to visit me. I gave him my bike. He traveled around until it was stolen and then he called me up, said he was out of money and took a train and I took him to the airport. Next thing we did is the big trip. We went, started in Switzerland, starting with Stern, you know, center, you know, the world's largest particle accelerator. I was fortunate enough to be able to go, here it is, the largest one, it's in two countries. It's twenty-some miles around circumference. I actually was able to go twice. I went and saw this detector and that detector. And these are the world's, you know, most expensive, most distinctive machines ever built. I saw a, well, I don't have time to go into everything, but I got to go underground. This is unusual to go underground. It's only when they have the facility shut down for special cleaning, maintenance stuff and it's only during like a couple of weeks in January. So, hard hats down, you know, this is checking things out. They have, oh, I love this, you know, like, you know how they have signs in Europe and it has to be all kind of symbolic because people don't speak all languages? So here's the sign of like, "You will die if you like stay here when the red light is on." So, anyway, so stopped off at the Montreux Jazz Festival, you know? Music is very mathematical, very scientific, got to explore all that, too. You like Gruyere cheese? I just didn't even realize I was driving through the town. I'm all, "We got to stop. I like cheese." How about Caillia Chocolate Factory? There we are, hanging out with cows. But then, we made it to see Einstein's clock in Zurich, supposedly the clock that inspired his special theory of relativity. So for me, I teach a class called Black Holes. It used to be called Introduction to Relativity and Cosmology and all the students were too afraid to sign up for it. I just changed the name to Black Hole. I don't do anything different and they all sign up pretty fast now. But to be able to say that I've seen this clock that I talk about, that, you know, that Einstein himself apparently was inspired to see his home. This is the home he lived in with his wife and his son. And then to, this is the patent office. This is the famous patent office where he, you know, supposedly, when he was supposed to be doing other stuff, was working on his theories. But this is a funny story. So I show up, I'm driving through town late at night and I knew it was in the street corner. I knew the address, right? But there's like four buildings and they all look the same. So I thought it was this one because I saw a picture of it, right? So I take all these pictures of me in front of it to share with my students and then I find out that it's the wrong building, okay? So there's an astronomer from Lascombrus Observatory, who I know quite well, I hear I saw him. And he has to go back to a conference and he says, "Well, I'll take the right picture for you." You know, so he goes back and he sends me these Google map things and then he takes the picture of the right place and he finds a sign that even says that it's the right place and sends that to me. And so, then I went back again and looked in my pictures and found that I had taken a picture of the right place and I put it there. So these are the stories I tried to tell my classes. Then we moved on. I drove to Einstein's birth town of Ulm, which didn't actually play a big story in his life, a big history of life. Went to Berlin where he was, I mean, sorry, Munich where he was a kid. My kids got to drink beer. It's actually a special lemonade beer, right? You'll vouch for me, right? Not too bad. It's like mixed with lemonade. But they're like.
It smells awful.
Must that happen? Shh, don't tell anyone. Just a little bit. Went to Prague, the famous astronomical clock in Prague. Prague has an observatory. Prague is also where Kepler, Johannes Kepler, was the royal astronomer and that's a big part of history. You go into the Kepler Museum, your ticket has on it the positions of the sun, moon, and planets at the moment you enter the museum. So, you know, he's famous for basically coming up with the laws of science and physics that explain that. And so, your ticket actually has that on there, so it's kind of neat. Berlin, where Einstein was residing and developing his theories of general relativity right up to just when the war started. Then we continued on from Berlin up to Sweden, Australia, where this is. This is, there's a little island called the Island of Ben, which is between Denmark and Sweden. It used to be a Danish island, it's now a Swedish island. And so, people get that mixed up in the history books a little bit. But Tycho Brahe, I used to always call him Tycho Brahe, but I learned on this trip by talking to the data, this is Tycho Brahe, you know? So, I learned important things here. He had a giant castle and they don't have the castle there, but they have hedges that show where it was. And they have an underground observatory and you ride bikes through all little islands. And in Sweden, it's legal to ride your bike on anyone's property and you just ride wherever you want and camp wherever you want. So, I went to the museum there and saw his famous observatory. Continued on in Stockholm. Stockholm, of course, is where Einstein was, you know, awarded his Nobel Prize, so had to go there. Former students, so Adam here is a former student and astronomy tutor. Sarah is a former student and astronomy student. So, I met them. Adam, he is one of my most colorful students and I have so many stories. But the one that I'll share with you now is that I, you know, he says, "Oh, stay with us. My family wants you to stay with us." And so, I go and arrive and, hello? So I go and arrive and I'm talking, we're having a great evening with his parents and we're really enjoying it. His dad is telling me he's gone to the North Pole. Like he's actually been to the North Pole, like in that expedition. And he'd sleep at night and like the ice would open up and he'd like, you know, worried that he would like fall into the ocean, you know? And then he's telling me, "Yeah, Adam told me about you guys. All he did is just tell us that this family from America is coming and are going to stay for a week with us." That's all he told me. And so, I had no idea who you were. Just showed up and we like stayed with Adam for a week and it was great. The Vasa Museum is my, probably my, I think, one of the most impressive museums for me personally. It's about a ship that, who's been to the Vasa? Anyone? Okay, so it's, I mean, basically, in terms of science and engineering, they built this ship. There's a little bit of debate as to why they built that third deck of cannons, but they set sail and within, you know, the moment it got out to like deep water, it flipped over and sunk and everyone died. And so, that was four hundred years ago. It's one of the best-preserved ships of the time. And it's amazing, you can actually see like skeletons and they have this ship and it's got this story that really ties in with science and engineering, you know? So, I like to share these stories with my students. Adam now lives in the University of Uppsala and so we saw his dorm room and he took us to the chemistry department where he, you know, he's doing chemistry. So it's just a really, a great academic learning experience for me. And in that sense, you know, where my students come from, where they go to and things like that. Visited another student in Amsterdam. This was a funny story, social media at its best. I didn't post a lot of social media stuff, but at one point, mid-trip, I said, "I'm doing this. I'm traveling through these countries." And he sees this and he says, "Oh, well, be sure to stop by Amsterdam when you come by." And it was the day I was driving to Amsterdam and I'm like, "Well, I'll be there in an hour." Says, "Great." And he met us for dinner, showed us around. He is amazing. He has designed this very advanced astrolabe. Sky and Telescope Magazine has featured it as a new innovative, you know, product for the year. And he designed this himself and is having these laser engraved. So he's just a great example of the industriousness of our students. Okay, driving back, this is actually another funny story. Driving back toward Grenoble and I'm nearing the end. I know my time's up pretty much if not already. But I'm driving along and we're going through these empty fields in Belgium, like just totally empty grassy fields. And my son says, "Dad, I just saw a rocket." I'm like, "You saw a rocket?" "Yeah, we just drove by a rocket." "Really? I didn't see it." So I'm like, "You're sure?" I would turn around, I went back and there was a rocket in this field. Turns out, it was a, it was the Eurospace Center in Transine or something. And it's like this huge place. I didn't even know about it. I just drove by it. And it was huge. It was great. In Strasbourg, there's the famous astronomical clock of Strasbourg. And then, I just want to conclude by saying that you have to also explore the possibility of UFOs. There's a band called UFO that was very popular back in the seventies and eighties. I want to see them one, too. And so, that concludes my presentation, but I just wanted to say that it was, I want to conclude by saying that it was the most significant professional development activity of my life. I know there's often debate about the value of sabbaticals and I just want to say that this is something I never could have done without the, you know, opportunity to actually live in the country and take the time to research where to go, to research the background of these places, to meet people, to interview them, to take time, you know, and developing the multimedia materials to share with my classes, to generate interest and enthusiasm and excitement. And, you know, when people take sabbatical like this, And, and, you know, when people take a sabbatical like this, you know, it looks like a little vacation, but this was the financially extremely challenging, my wife couldn't, didn't, you know, we lost her income, I no longer could do overloads, which, of course, we depend on to pay our mortgage, we had to, you know, rent out our house, and logistically, my kids had to find new schools, and this was a real big challenge for my family. And it is a life-changing event for me as a teacher, as well as, of course, my kids, it was a big deal for them too. So, I want to thank the school for, for supporting sabbaticals, and I hope that you will continue to support sabbaticals to allow teachers to really professionally grow. I really have so much more to offer my classes now, and I thank you.
Thank you, does the board have any comments or questions?
Oh, yeah, questions?
I hope you didn't buy one of those little locks for the bridge, I saw you had those.
Oh, I did not add any locks, I just, I thought there were enough there, there were enough.
I know, they have a lock shop right there, and so you, my husband thought it was so handy, that it was right there.
That's right. I noticed that on a number of places, it was like a thing to do, I think.
It was bridges.
I didn't know that was a thing, but I...
But I loved, I just loved your enthusiasm, I'm sure your children appreciated being over there too for you, that was quite an adventure for two teens.
Sort of.
I know.
No, no, actually, it's...
But they would have been unhappier here.
Seriously, when we, I told them we were going, they're like, "What? You're taking, I'm a junior in high school, I'm gonna miss my, you know?" They're just like absolutely livid, it was just, it was like, I was the meanest dad in the world. We get over there, and then it's like, "Do we have to go back?" They actually wanted to stay, it was, it was actually the most, I was really surprised, and I was really happy about that.
I have a comment, I, the reason I have supported, the board has supported the sabbaticals.
Of course, with your support is why I was able to go.
When, I'm sure others have had the same experience, but went through my college years, I found that over half my professors just sort of taught out of the book, and there wasn't like any real enthusiasm, and it's funny, you know, at pushing 70 now, I look back, and I still remember those professors that were so enthusiastic. I can remember the stories they told me, and their nicknames, all kinds of stuff. And it just doesn't go away, when you put some emotion into what you're teaching, and, you know, you relate to it, you set up, you set an example. And so, I believe that that is to be commended, and my primary reason for, you know...
Well, thank you.
Supporting the program.
Yeah, I hope to bring the subject matter to life for my students, and this helped me immeasurably. I mean, just to tell stories and show pictures, you know? It's great, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for the presentation. I was at the Galileo Museum myself this summer, so...
Oh.
And, you know, I, my daughter's taking the art history at Santa Barbara, sorry, at Santa Barbara High. So, Ms. Nye mirrors your excitement, and so, when she shows the children, the students, the Renaissance art of Florence when she was there, and it just brings the class to life. So, thank you for taking your family on that adventure. Beautiful. That brings us to item 6.2, Budget Forecast, Lindsay Moss, thank you for doing this.
I think this is the second time I've had to talk about the budget after an exciting topic like this. It's like, I really can't, you know?
It is pretty good.
I don't know, I don't, I don't think I can compete.
Reality just hit.
Bookstores have been...
This one more?
No. Well, it doesn't matter, you can put it up, you can put it up if you want, we're gonna pass it around. Okay. So, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this because we have another presentation after this, but back when we had our fiscal subcommittee, this is something we would always go through, so I wanted to bring it to the full board at this point in time. So, on January 17th, the governor gave us his January budget proposal. And luckily, we had James Zoffis, our controller, was able to go to the ACBO workshop and learn about that. I had to stay here with all the things going on around here, I think we were busy with the Montessori Union School that week, all of our disasters. But the budget right now is mostly good news, so it's nice for a change. The revenues are projected to come in higher, that helps us with our Prop 98 general fund guarantee that we'll be receiving more to the K through 12 and California community colleges as well. I'm gonna kind of jump around, I'm not gonna follow this specifically, because there's different points I want to talk about, you guys can read it on your own, or you may have already read some information. But one of the big new changes is... These new funding formula that the government, the governor's proposing. So, right now, we're funded primarily on our FTS, and the size of our college, the number of students that we serve. And the new funding formula that's being proposed, and will most likely go forward, is based on this new split of the 50%, 25%, and 25%. The 50% is basically the same way it is right now, based on our FTS. So, we'll be funded, half, half of our funding will be on our FTS as it has been in the past. But the new parts are the 25% being funded based on how many of our students are receiving the BOG waivers, which is basically our low-income students, and that'll be compared to all other community colleges in the state. So, if we're a community college serving more low-income students than other colleges, we'll receive a more, a larger piece of that pie. And in this area, we do, we do serve quite a few low-income students. We feel like, we haven't seen the numbers yet, this is all newly proposed, we don't have any information explaining to us where other colleges are at, we don't have concrete numbers from the governor yet, so we're all anxiously awaiting that. But our suspicion here is that we should fare pretty well in that area because we do have a lot of low-income students here compared to other colleges. Then that last new piece of the pie here is about our certificate and degree programs, and how well we do in that area, and we know Santa Barbara City College does very well in that, in the transfer area. So, all this is, although this is, you know, a new funding formula that's, you know, nobody's quite sure exactly how that's gonna work, but we're feeling like it's not gonna be bad news for us, it's not gonna hinder us too much from what we've seen now, so that's a good thing. The other thing that, to focus on is that there is a hold harmless provision that the governor's providing, that if for some reason you do drop below where you were being funded below, before in prior years, they're not gonna hold you to this completely in the first year, so they're kind of giving you a year to get used to this new, new funding formula. But there's a lot of open questions on this, exactly how it's gonna work, exactly what data is gonna be based on, we haven't heard that kind of information yet. And I don't know if you guys want me to stop, and if you guys have questions about that particular piece, or want to discuss it.
Have they given you any indication of when you will get the comparative figures for the community colleges?
Uh-uh, not yet. Yeah.
When I read about this before, we go or so, it seemed like there was like a forgiveness thing, like, you're not gonna get paid less, you'll have plenty, you'll have plenty of time to adjust to, to changes.
The one year that I was just talking about, yeah, one-year hold harmless.
There'll be a lag time.
And they're even funding 175 million just for that portion. Yeah.
But essentially, it starts on July 1st, is it?
Yeah, yes, it's gonna start. Yeah, so we'll hear more about it in the May revise, like we always do. We have this time period between January and May, where we hear about what the governor's proposing in January, and then a lot of things can change in legislature between now and May, and then in May, we'll get the final information. Which always makes it tough for us to budget, because we're trying to put together all the information, and we don't have the final information until right before we need to adopt the tentative budget.
So, in developing a budget, not knowing how we would actually fall on this new allocation, how are you gonna do it?
I'm gonna be doing a lot of work with other CBOs, I mean, most CBOs are very active in trying to understand how all this works, I've got a whole host of emails and conference calls that my, my region, we have a CBO region that we'll be working on, and some of those CBOs are on the ACBO board, and they have a lot more knowledge and kind of inside information, where I'm gonna be working with them and trying to figure out how is everybody doing it.
You know, one thing that we do know about our governor is that he's an out-of-the-box thinker, and he will propose things that many times will get modified and manipulated and changed as time goes along. And so, in some ways, although, as Lindsay points out, we're tracking this very closely to see how it might play out in its current form, but we're also trying to figure out, you know, what kind of changes, what kind of negotiations are going on behind the scenes in Sacramento, so we don't get, you know, too down into the weeds and spend a whole bunch of time trying to come up with massive spreadsheets and such before we actually know what we're trying to create. And so, it's a balancing act, it's a balancing act to try to keep up on it.
So, will they give you a similar template like the LCAP?
I don't, I don't know yet, but that's what we're all working on and talking about, and there's actually some formulas being circulated right now of ideas of what it might look like.
I mean, I guess just in my head thinking, I mean, when you, I think, if you look at the demographic, and you look at the LCAP for carpentaria in Santa Barbara Unified, then that gives you an idea of where the 25% of the funding would come from, with the free and reduced, and the title and the categorical that they receive. And I kind of see all this working in tandem with the foundation, and, you know, the college promise grant, and kind of just seeing, at least locally, I think it gives you an idea of the potential of the college-going students that could potentially come to Santa Barbara City College, just looking at the local LCAPs. Not that you want to read for all the pages, but I did for the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and it does give you an idea of these, where these folks are coming in from. Yeah, well, good luck to your team.
I wanted to make one other comment about the 120 million to create a fully online community college. It'd be the 115th community college. We had a meeting, a telephone conference meeting with Senator Hannah Beth Jackson and Dr. Priscilla Butler, Lou S. Ries, Martine, myself, Vice President Booth, had an opportunity to spend some time explaining, you know, that the, that the effort of trying to reach an additional two and a half million students that may not have access to higher education is certainly a worthy goal, and one that is an important one to pursue. But we also pointed out that there are concerns in terms of how that two and a half million potential students might be reached relative to using this mode of online, which has been shown many times not to be the most effective way to reach students that have just a high school diploma and may be underprepared for college-level work. So, we, we spent some time with her very effectively, you know, Dr. Butler did an excellent job of presenting from the academic senate perspective, faculty perspective, the issues that relate to all of that, and I think that was a worthy effort, in my view. I don't know if Dr. Butler might want to say anything about it, but...
Oh, thank you, no, I think it was very productive. It sounded as if she and perhaps other legislators don't have a lot of information about the proposal for a full, a fully online college. So, I think having that conversation at least makes them aware of some of the concerns that have been voiced to date.
So, I have a couple other, just specifics I want to point out, they're on the second page on the back here. Good news in terms of Acola, that he's currently proposing a two and a half percent increase in cola, and it always is relieving to see that it's also being applied to many of the categoricals and grants, so that's, that's useful for our budget and for those, those folks, because we do pass along the cola to all of our employees, whether we receive the funding on the grant side or not, so it helps those grants to be given the same cola as well. And another one that's near and dear to my heart in my new role here is on the deferred maintenance and instructional equipment, that there will be additional one-time monies for that, similar to the amounts we have received before, but this, this one is a pretty good chunk, about $3 million, and of course, we'll have to go through the process of deciding how we want to use that, because it can be divided between deferred maintenance and instructional equipment in the way we choose. So, we'll work on that with all of our, you know, shared governance groups, and decide a good way to allocate that. But hopefully, that one will come to fruition because we do need, you know, to do some maintenance items and buy more instructional equipment for our students in classrooms. And it's good that there's continued funding on the Prop 51 with the school facilities bond. This is something that I'm, you know, starting to keep an eye out for with our one project that we do have in the pipeline with them for Prop 51 funding. This won't impact what we have in the pipeline right now, because this is for projects that have already been approved, but it's nice to see that they're continuing to fund those. And with the five new ones they're funding for 1819, there were 15 others that were not approved, so those would be in next year's ranking again against ours. But we still feel pretty good that ours would actually be ranked pretty high because of the health and safety needs of ours. So, that's the, that's the update on that one, and I think that's about all I wanted to cover.
Any additional questions, comments for Lindsay? Yes, Marty?
I just want to assure our new board members that we don't always speak in foreign tongues.
Only when I speak.
Yeah.
I'm making note of the vocabulary that I left.
I know, you said you were a quick study, so I'm really glad, because this is a perfect example of the kind of thing that we all had to get used to, but when you do get used to it, Lindsay speaks very well.
And then Angie, did you know Vice President Booth is here?
Yes.
Okay, just...
Yeah, and I think next time I have to bring fun pictures of, you know, Berlin or something.
This is good, so that takes us to item 6.3, Presentation and SBCC Auxiliary Services, Lindsay Moss.
So, while Lindsay's getting set up, I want to just make a couple of comments. One of the things is that, in the past, this has not been a real focus of a presentation for the board, the, this area of auxiliary services, which includes both the bookstore operations and food services operations. And so, what we're showing you here today is, I think, one of the first times that it's actually been presented in this package of those two areas put together. And Lindsay will go into a little bit more about the organizational structure of that. We have Paul Miller who's here, he's the Director of Auxiliary Services, and has been doing just an outstanding job running both of these operations, which are significant for the college, obviously significant for our students. But as you'll see, they are challenging in many ways, but Paul has certainly stepped up to meet that challenge, and we're certainly proud of the work that he's done in the last, what, year, year and a half?
Auxiliary Services, yes.
Yeah, so, congratulations to all your successes, so, I don't know, who wants to go first?
I'm gonna start off.
Okay.
But you did a great job, so, yeah, it's perfect. I think we're just gonna stay seated if everyone's okay with that, because we're gonna kind of trade off and go back and forth through these slides and answer questions. As, as always with my presentations, I don't know if it's good or bad, I have a lot of content, so feel free to just ask questions as we go, if you feel the need. So, for the last, yeah, year and a half, we've got a new structure going on, so here's, here's what we're gonna go through, but we'll get to that. I want to talk about the structure that we have set up. So, I don't know if everyone, and of course, Mr. Miller, he's brand new, so he's not familiar with this at all, but how our structure was set up in the past. We had underneath, my role of Vice President of Business Services, we had a Director of the Campus Store, and we had a Director of Food Services, two completely different roles, of course, we're all on the same team and worked together exhaustively, but unfortunately, in December of 2016, our Director of Food Services passed away. So, at the time, we were having a lot of changes, a lot of folks coming and going, and with his departure, we were very, very lucky to have Paul Miller here, he was already our Director of the Campus Store, and he quickly stepped into the role of overseeing interim, on an interim basis, both areas. I learned, and I didn't know a whole lot about Paul's background at that point in time, that he was one of our culinary students back when he was a student here at Santa Barbara City College. He ran multiple restaurants and catering businesses, so I knew he had a lot of background in retail stores and things of that nature, and Starbucks, of course, but it really came together well with all of his expertise and interest in food and culinary to oversee all of the venues. And having worked with the Business Services Team for a while, already, you know, here at Santa Barbara City College, I could see that there's a lot of synergies between those two different businesses, and having one person overseeing them at the same time was gonna provide a huge benefit to the college. So, we made the decision to go forward and create a Director of Auxiliary Services overseeing the Campus Store and Food Services together, and we were able to... And we were able to have Paul Miller fill that role officially, starting back in July 1st of last year. So it's been great to have him. And as a part of that change, we created, so we eliminated the Director of Food Services position completely. And we created two new supervisor roles, so not, not Director roles, but supervisor roles in the Campus Store and in Food Services. And that helps him focus on the high-level strategy, you know, planning, projects, et cetera, and have some folks more on the ground, running operations and doing things of that nature. And we, we also have great people, Shane and Sandy. Shane worked in the store before, has lots of expertise in textbooks. He's worked at Arizona State University, San Diego State University in stores for a very long time on the textbook side. And then Sandy came from the Culinary Arts Program. She had been cooking in our JSP kitchen for, how many years?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years. She's very cute. She told me she was finally getting tired of making bacon every day for the hamburgers. And she has been a tremendous asset to get up into our cafeteria and into the kitchen. She's created all-new menus with all-new recipes in the food. Please go in cafeteria, it's not like cafeteria food, it's fantastic. So he'll talk about that more, but I did want to explain how excited we are about having both of them in this new structure and how well it is working for, for the whole college. So with that said, though, I'm going to pass it on to Paul, one of our many Millers. Now we have another Miller. And he's going to talk about some of the specifics of what he's working on strategic-wise in Food Service and, and the Campus Store.
Okay. And starting with Food Services, I just wanted to kind of go over where, I don't know, in a nutshell, what I inherited, where we are today, and then where we hope to go in the next three years. What we're focusing on is our, the strengths that I can see that Food Services has, the weaknesses that Food Services has, and how we can recreate that to make this a great profitable business. So Food Services focused along with exceptional customer services to provide high-quality, fresh ingredients in a very, in every meal we make. And so this is a year in review. In July of 2017, Food Services and Satellite Services combined. Satellite Services was yet another group or department, if you will, that just focused on the coffee shops. We saw that their Food Services was too spread out, and we started to, at that point, to combine these different departments, if you will. And then at the same time, due to programmatic shifts in culinary, that caf, these campus cafeteria had been run by the culinary program for, I was in in '82, probably since the '50s, or since it was, it was started. So there was a staff of two teachers, professors, and then about nine students running the camp, campus cafeteria. At that point, they left to go downstairs as they redid their program, and we hired a full staff, one being Sandy, to recreate what they had and bring it even further with new, fresh menus and food ideas like that. With clear goals and focus, Food Services moved forward with fresh new menus in all the locations. So Sandy is actually a position that never existed in Food Services. They had a director who had to focus on new projects, front of the house and back of the house, if you will. There was always a position that was supposed to focus on food, but it was the same level as of many other positions, that some of them just did daily cooking of hamburgers and whatnot. That wasn't working out. So this supervisory position with Chef Sandy focuses on everything that you eat here that's fresh. So she's in charge of making all the menus, make, ensuring that the, her chefs under her understand exactly how to produce these menus and go around and, and engage in quality control on a daily basis. So we've seen real success there.
I just want to, I just want to compliment Paul and Sandy for the menus that they've come up with. These are not, as Lindsay points out, these are not, you know, bare-bones, you know, mess-hall type menus. I mean, these are extensive gourmet dishes that, that they're coming up with. Several entrees, lots of side, side, side dishes that are, are really good. They're good quality, they, they taste really good. So I just want to make sure that we, we talk about, you know, that, that these are high-end quality products that are being produced, and it's not, not like days of old. And I don't know if people have had an opportunity to eat there, but it really is very, very good.
And there meaning hopefully every venue that we have, in West Cafeteria, East Cafeteria.
Favelas.
Favelas, Mexican restaurant we have here, Pacific Cafe, so...
Yeah. Kind of great stuff.
And then along this past six months, this is basically six months here, the campus center building equipment had to be upgraded. That is a result of the campus center not going down and being rebuilt. So in that category, there was quite a bit of equipment that was there in the eighties when I was in school. And it was kind of patched together to keep going because the thought was the campus center would go down, and at that point, they would replace it. Well, since it didn't go down, there was some very unsafe equipment in there, and we got an opportunity to upgrade some of that equipment. And then here, this is where we're introducing Sandy, and she was in the culinary program for 31 years. And, and just going around campus, you can tell that she's doing a very great focused job. And then I just wanted to introduce you all to a couple, to the venues that we do currently have. We have the East and West Campus Cafeteria. Chef Antonio and Chef Timothy are running those kitchens under Sandy. And they're serving everything from seafood to desserts, Asian-American, Italian cuisine specials, fresh salads, including each one has a full salad bar, fresh soups, a variety, and a variety of prepackaged snacks and beverages. Favelas, which is right over here, is under Chef Fernando, and he's offering a Mexican-style restaurant. And he serves items such as chicken pastor, asada, and vegetarian burritos, tacos, nachos, quite a few Mexican side dishes, and they can come plated, and we're, are looking into catering also out of that because it's being so sought after. Then we have another place, the last place is called Natural Bowls. And it's an asahi-based product, which is a very, it's actually a berry from a certain type of palm tree that has a bunch of antioxidants and vitamins and whatnot. And businesses around Santa Barbara have recognized this and actually opened up based on this business. So we tried it, or Mark Sullivan tried it out, and it's, it's doing fairly well. It's pretty pricey, but you'll see Lindsay in that line every day.
I, yeah. I eat there a lot. It's my favorite. It's very good.
Natural Bowls is actually inside the cafeteria where the seating area is.
Yeah. So it's not a standalone venue, it's inside of this building. Oh, now we're, you just have a couple more, your Pacific Cafe and the coffee.
Pacific Cafe. Pacific Cafe is that beach-style trailer that's out on West Campus Ca, West Campus. And it, we wanted to set up sort of like a beach snack bar. That's, Mark Broomfield did a bunch of very nice plants there, and we have picnic benches and whatnot. And it is offering a, a menu, and we want to do some signature items there. So there's the Ledbetter Burger, Vicaro Burger, a variety of street tacos, and barbecue chicken sandwiches. And we also used it as a venue for catering when it shut, and it was very successful at the Fourth of July event, so we wanted to throw that in there. And then we do have the coffee kiosk around campus, one located in the library and one located here, right in the lobby here, called the Buzz Shack.
Do you want me to do the money? Or do you want to talk, the money's, you know, just the best part.
If you do it correctly, I'd like you to...
I'll go, I'll go on the money part, yeah. So this is, this is some history, you know, before, before Paul was, was working on the Food Service, but it's always good for all of us to understand where we, where we've been and, and where we're headed. And Food Service, over the years, you know, I'm going to start off with a little quick accounting lesson because Food Service and Campus Store are different and it's confusing and complicated. But Food Service is a completely separate fund from the General Fund, so it's, it's all on its own. It's set up as a, a other special revenue fund, which in essence means it's, it's not designed to make money, it's designed to serve our students and, and be separate from the General Fund, not, it's never had any money coming from the General Fund, it's never been supported by the General Fund over all these years. So what they have to do with a lot of their funds is remodel the buildings, update the venues, and that's what they did for quite a few years, these four years where it's negative. Ironically, we were looking at what kind of remodels they did and how much money they spent, and it's about that amount of money. Typically, they would break even, make a hundred or $200,000, but during those years, they were negative because of all the remodels they were doing. And they literally remodeled every single food venue we have on campus during those years. So they're in great condition right now, and, and the traffic flow is, is good, like in the JSP, they did a whole new layout, and West Campus Cafeteria. So a lot of investments were made during that time, but it was very worthwhile. And now we're into 2016, 17 is the first year where Paul was involved, and we're happy to see that they did have a profit. And their profits just fall to the ending fund balance like we're familiar with for the unrestricted General Fund, same kind of idea. So they do need to have a buffer. You can see, I just made a little note here of what the ending fund balances were and have been. So you could see that they had a larger balance of 740 that they used up as they did the remodels, and now they're around 310. So they do need a cushion for any type of large expenditures they may need to make throughout the year, if they need new software for the registers or, or, you know, new equipment or things like that. So that's the past. Paul and I have been spending a lot of time together. We, you know, we meet, we have one-hour weekly meetings that are never an hour, they're always much, much longer, and there's always more than one a week somehow. But we've been really focused on talking about Food Service and the Campus Store venues and strategies, and where we're headed and what we're trying to do, and to make sure that we can meet the goals that we're trying to meet. So we've been looking at projections and talking about where we're at. This year, the, the goal or projection is to break even this year. This year has been a little bit of a tough year with the change in the Culinary Arts Program and having to hire more people, there was some cost to that. And also trying out the, the different venues with the Pacific Cafe trailer. But we're very much on a mission to at least break even and, you know, contain our, our ending fund balance that we have. And going forward, we're looking to just continue, continue to be self-sustaining and, you know, do, do as well as we can, but we're not seeing us making a half million dollars for these venues. You know, it's really a service to the students, provide good quality food for good prices, and also great jobs for our students. Most of our students who work on campus are working in our food venues, that's, which is a great, a great asset for them. Anything else you want to add on the money?
I wanted to add something on the money. You know, this is really ambitious to show any kind of a profit. Most of these auxiliary organizations like this really are shooting for a break even. So I, I do applaud you for, for, you know, trying to set goals that are higher than just break even. But that is what sustainability is all about. You're going to need those extra monies to, to support things that come along. I mean, stuff happens. Things blow up, burners don't work, whatever, and you'll, you'll need some replacements for that. That's why it's important to, to be able to have that money set aside for future infrastructure issues or whatever might come along.
Yeah. And Paul's going to share with us next what, what we've been talking about, what some of his plans are and ideas are to make sure that we can continue to be self-sustaining and make a little bit of, you know, profit at the end of the day, hopefully.
So I kind of alluded to it a little bit earlier, but what we need to do is focus on what's working right and what is actually a sustainable, viable business on campus. And with that in mind, in spring 2018 and going forward, there will be a focus on our strengths. We will continue to address staffing issues, improve menus, service, and facilities at the East and West Campus Cafeterias. We're committed to only adding menus and services that our current labor can support. And the new direction for the Pacific Cafe, unfortunately, today was the last day it's open, but that's because we have exciting ideas for what we want to make it into. We, we had a lot of good reaction and response to some of the menu items on there, but we realized that a lot of these menu items can be absorbed in our venues that are doing well and are strong and have been here for a long time. So that menu's going to be feathered out into these venues. And then in the future, we're looking into possibly consolidating the coffee shops, and that seems like a perfect coffee shop. It's right next to the, one of the main arteries where the students walking by. And then this Natural Bowls is kind of in an odd location, and things in a blender seem to marry things coming out of coffee shops very well. So we're thinking about combining those two, and we figure it could reduce labor up to four people an hour. So that's a significant help to the business in the end of the day. The, the Pacific Cafe then, out there, will be used as a catering kitchen. A lot of caterers that come to campus to do weddings and whatnot, or, or, or go to any venue will pay more if there's a kitchen available to them. Otherwise, they have to rent all that equipment. And it is a very usable, updated kitchen inside that trailer, right on that lawn, which is just a perfect site. So we see a lot of good things in the future for that venue. Also, under new direction, we'll work to continue, or to combine coffee shops and venues, I mentioned that. We are developing a pickup-style coffee service. We're looking into taking a certain level of the catering away from culinary that doesn't seem to fit in their, their plan anymore. And one of the things that we're looking at is if making a menu that includes up to 25 people, and it's more like, sort of like a continental breakfast-type menu, something that you could order from Starbucks, actually, like a Joe to Go with 25 cups of coffee and then pastries and some fruit and some prepackaged items. So we're looking into that. And then another commitment we have is we'll only use the equipment and facilities and staff that we currently have to get any one of these new ideas done. I think that we have ample staff already. In fact, I think that we have too much staff in a few places. And so our commitment, or my message to the team is that we're not hiring anymore. Get comfortable. We can deploy differently if we need to, but this is it. And they're starting to realize that that's the best plan. And then we're moving on to the Campus Store.
Do you have more questions? I was just going to say that. Does anybody have any questions before we move to the Campus Store? Because they might want to talk about food.
And with your previous presentation too, I didn't ask, the staff and guests that are here, please feel free to, you know, join us.
Thank you.
Well, I just had a, I mean, I think the kind of organizational thinking and the planning that you're putting into this and really assessing where we are and where we need to go makes great sense, and I really appreciate that. I was kind of wondering if, as you looked at where we had been and some of those things, I, you know, seeing this on the agenda, I went back and looked at our budgets for these areas. And one of the things really stood out to me as kind of what happened, that I hadn't noticed. And I'm just wondering, did you have that experience trying to reconstruct where we've been at all?
On the Food Service side?
Yeah.
Well, we, I mean, we definitely did on the part where I described the remodels, where, wait a minute, you know, why were we negative $245,000 in 1314? So that, that helped me understand it a lot, to realize, oh, we did this major construction project, we did another major construction project here and there. I don't know if there was anything else that struck you as odd, or if that was...
Well, the, the thing that jumped out at me was that we had had a budget ending balance in 1516?
Mm-hmm.
That was budgeted to be almost $700,000. And then when we got to the actual, it was $232,000.
Mm-hmm.
It was like this $450,000. And, and it didn't immediately make sense to me, given the loss of $110,000 that year, what happened.
Yeah. Like, so I think what you're describing is the difference between the budget and the actual. That's what you're asking is why was there such a big difference in the budget and the actual?
What happened there?
Yeah.
Apart from the, you know, the, the hundred and ten that we, that we got down.
Yeah.
I thought this was pretty clear, cause, um, serving on both the, uh, facilities and, uh, fiscal committee.
Right.
Back then, as they were doing all these things and all fit together pretty nicely. And there are new venues that were opened up, all kinds of stuff happened, remodels. And it looks pretty good. I might have some questions on the bookstore end of it, but this part I'm pretty familiar with.
I'm just not seeing it in this budget, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if, if Lindsay had seen some reason that...
Yeah, offhand. Yeah, offhand, I can take a look at those years.
Yeah.
But offhand, I haven't studied them recently, so I wouldn't wanna say.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, I just sort of like, oh, yeah.
You know, one thing that's difficult... I just, I just wanna say that one thing that is difficult, and maybe this kinda goes to your point, Marsha, is that, you know, we're all new in these positions and so, um, looking, looking back at some of those numbers and trying to reconstruct exactly where they came from and what was going on and some of the transfers that were going on, it becomes, um, really laborious in terms of trying to figure it all out. In some ways, a kind of a spelunkian expedition to try to figure, figure out what actually happened. But, you know, so what we're really doing is we, we understand all that. It's all audited, we've got it all squared away, but we're really focusing, and I think Paul's done a good job of laying out, on the future. What our future plan is, how we can sustain this thing. But, you know, I mean...
No, you're right. And I'm not suggesting that a lot of time needs to be put into it so much as if you already understood, okay, that was X venue or something like that.
Yeah, offhand, I don't, um, and it's, it's not obvious from just the summary that we have, what happened.
And to that, I went in seeing these numbers and somewhat rem- well, totally removed from it, but sitting in management meetings and stuff and there was just a lot of spending. And this, under this umbrella, there was a lot of spending and to upgrade a lot of venues. And I recognize that because I was sitting in the campus store, which can only spend money that they generate. And, and I recognize it because I was thinking, gosh, I wish I could have some of that, you know? But that, that's kind of as deep as that got, so...
Yeah, actually, there's, the money that either of the, I think either of these I know for campus store generates is basically unrestricted general fund money. It can go to whatever, or support our students. And if you're in a situation like that where you're saying, gosh, I really need some of that and maybe we're looking at food service more than we're campus store at this point, um, it's a two-way street. And then you can say, okay, these are among the things that we need, let's put it in with everything else. I don't think that there's a legal reason you can only spend the money you generate. I think it's part of what we prioritize as we look at repairs and improvements.
Sure. Good to know.
So, excuse me, where is the food sourced from primarily? The food that we use for food services locally sourced mainly or what's the breakdown?
Such a large production that as much as can be sourced locally is, but with the quantity of the numbers going through there, the larger percentage, I can't give you an exact percentage, is not...
It's more not locally sourced?
Oh, absolutely. This is, these venues are very large compared to, compared to most of the restaurants in town. Cafeteria, now that being said, some of it, a lot more is now that Sandy's here than was because she doesn't wanna open a can. So thank you for bringing that up, actually.
Fresh as possible.
A lot, as fresh as possible and more sustainable product is being introduced. Because if you're passionate about cooking, you know the difference in quality and that's what we're looking for is. Still trying to serve not only the students, but the staff eat here every day and faculty eat here every day. And we, they've been eating here for, from a business perspective, very inexpensively. So we can't go in there and just raise prices and say that's how we're gonna break even or make money. We gotta figure out how we're gonna do it and raise the quality of menu. And luckily, we have Sandy, she knows her way around having, coming from culinary, which is a smaller venue like the G D R. They can source more fresh ingredients and she knew where to get those. And so a lot of them are being incorporated into the menus now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Peter, more?
Well, two things. One, you, you're talking so much about food for a guy who missed lunch. Yeah, we have brownie for Peter.
I can help you out. I know some P U can get that.
I wanted to support your, your hypothesis about, uh, about a catering center. I mean, as one, you was had conferences on campus, uh, structured on a regional basis. We had no such option. We had to go off campus and bring food on by different vendors. And, um, that, that sometimes gave me, gave me cause for concern. So this is, this is, I think, well worth experimenting with.
Sure.
And is there any, any hope, anytime soon that we get the G D R back on track?
Well, that, um, interestingly enough, is not under my umbrella. The gourmet dining room and the G D R are culinary labs. And actually, the G D R is opening, is open now, I believe, for dinner.
Thursdays and Fridays.
Thursdays and Fridays, they just started. And, um, the, the crew that they have that's taking care of that is a top-notch crew, so I know it's gonna be very good. But, um, that's under the culinary program. So that's an actual educational, a, a department.
Okay, that's, that's interesting from, from the earlier discussion of the need for structure and, and housing everything under one roof.
Yeah, I should've mentioned that, that culinary is a, an academic department. It is, it's a culinary program with lab techs and labs and...
So the only, yeah, the only change was them coming out of the kitchen in the cafeteria in the east campus. They still have their J S B and G D R that they've been running for a very long time.
They've always ran that, but they also did cooking for the cafeteria and then they came out and went back, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to follow, I, I agree with you about the catering. I think that's been being really valuable because of the wedding venue. Because, uh, Ealing's Park, you know, we don't have a kitchen up there, but I, to give you an idea, maybe we should put a kitchen up there for the catering. But, you know, I just think that the beauty of our west campus, along with having a catering, a kitchen right there, it's gonna be, I think, very popular. Uh, but what I wanted to say was the Santa Barbara, we're talking about having a joint meeting with the school district, with Santa Barbara school district. They have an amazing person, not that we don't, but they have an amazing person named Nancy Wise, who has changed the whole concept of how these children eat. And has done a great job with fresh foods and all kinds of things. That seems almost impossible to anybody who has been teaching in a school. So I don't know, you, you might wanna explore that a little bit, just to see if that's something that, that might be of interest to us. And I don't know.
Yeah.
She's like started maybe ten years ago, or nine or ten.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Yeah, they cater, they cater.
They cater, yeah. So, and who, who thought of an elementary school catering?
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So we're moving on to the campus store.
Yeah, and the first thing Paul's gonna talk about on the campus store is the, the book rental program. And I know, working with the board for the last few years, that, uh, there's been a lot of questions about how's that going? What is it? So we wanted to bring it to you today. And just a little introduction to it is that it was back in two thousand and, oh, now I'm gonna say the wrong year. It was back in two thousand and sixteen when there was an investment made from the lottery fund. So a special source of, uh, funds that we receive from the state that can be used for instructional supplies. At the time, there was a decision to take some of the monies there because there was a large balance in that fund and it was growing every year. So a decision was made to take five hundred thousand dollars out of there and use it as an investment into the bookstore for seed money into building the rental program. So we're gonna have Paul go through that and explain to you how that works, what happened, um, and where we're at with that.
So it's a tricky program. You can ask questions any, you know, whenever you need to, I suppose. So the journey of a textbook, basically, is what we're gonna talk about when it comes to the rental program. Initially, we have a, well, we have a system in there called Verba. And what Verba does is it takes the schedule out of Argos and it talks to each individual professor assigned to a class and encourages them to adopt their book for the next semester as soon as possible. In somewhat of an irritating manner, in fact, it, it progressively gets more irritating if you don't adopt your book, which is a beautiful piece of software. Kenley knows a lot about it, I'm sure he's shaking. So the way, the journey of a textbook is that Verba is sending out reminders and helping professors through the process of adopting their book. In the, in the software, when they open up their email, they can see books that they've adopted for that particular class in the past. And including, if you go deeper, books that have been adopted for that class by other people. When we get eighty percent of those books in, eighty percent of those classes are covered with the required textbook adoption, we send that to a vendor, um, a book wholesaler. And we say, tell us which books in this list you will adopt. And you will guarantee, is the catchphrase, to take it back when the students return it. So they send us a list, it's not very big, of books that they'll guarantee to take back if we rent. We rent the textbook to the student, the student goes through their semester, the student returns the textbook. We send it back to the wholesaler. The way, I can read through this, but it's so tricky to explain that it seems, seems to be better this way. The way the money helped, the money's number one and only intention was to try to help the bookstore get a larger percentage of textbooks available for rent. So there's a slide.
And the big, the big reason to do this was to help our students succeed?
Lower the prices of textbooks, just too expensive.
Yeah.
So with that seed money, is how Joe was presenting it, we fanned it out for a couple of years. And we said, okay, so here's our, now we have some money to help us through this. If you rent a textbook, it takes just about, just under two years to make your money. About a year and a half to break even, about two years to make your first semester of any kind of profit. So basically, if you have a seventy-five dollar book, we're renting it for twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars, and then we make twenty-five dollars. It's a big investment. That's why it was a tough program financially for us to handle taking on on our own. That money helped us to double the amount of textbooks that we could offer to the students because what we did was we presented this list to the first vendor, knowing that we could possibly purchase these books when the students turned them back in if we knew that the professor was gonna use it again that, the next semester. If we did, we could buy it for a really reduced price and rent it again or sell it again or whatever category it was gonna end up being in. And it would lower the price in every category because we bought an old used book, basically. And it allowed us then, since we knew we had some backing, to be creative and even go to more wholesalers. Instead of just bringing this list to the first wholesaler and getting this many, then we took this portion of the list, brought it to another wholesaler. And then they allowed us or guaranteed us a number of books and we brought it to a third one. So it actually doubled the number of books that we could rent. And, um, at that, there was a slide, I don't know how, I kinda went way out.
Actually, you did great. You went, you went right along with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just to give you a little, an idea here, we have this calculus book. I picked a calculus book because unfortunately, most of us had to take calculus. I didn't mean unfortunately, I meant another word. I can't come up with it. So this calculus book, if you buy it new, is two hundred dollars. If you buy it used, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. If you rent it new, it's a hundred and twenty dollars. And if you rent it used, it's only sixty-five dollars. So you can see the importance of the rental program and the used book program. We spend hours and hours and hours and we bought in the software that scours the United States and beyond to find as many used books as we can. We try not to buy very many new books at all. The reason why I found a new book here today was because students in calculus are gonna buy the most used book that they can find for the least amount of money because they're gonna turn it back in. We do sell a lot of new books in H I T, which is nursing, because they use it in their library or automotive or marine science. So I just wanted to give you an example of the benefit and how greatly that lottery money supported what we're trying to do, which is literally bring the price down.
And when you multiply that times someone who has a full load, you know, they've got five classes that are all core classes like this. They're, they're gonna have a, they're buying all brand-new books. You're talking about almost a thousand dollars in books a semester. So being able to rent books for sixty-five dollars, you know, it's a tremendous difference. So it's a huge, I, I think it's a huge success for our students to be able to increase the program for them.
Is there a problem with the return process, I mean, the students?
Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, there is. The students are, the younger students are affected most by this price range because they're taking the core classes. As you get further on into your defined degree, it ends up starting to get a little bit less expensive because they can be sourced other places and whatnot. I forgot your question.
Returning the book.
Yes, okay, so at the very, so at the very beginning of us doing this, we, there was this line showing up on the P N L and I went to the bookkeeper to ask her what it was because it was a pretty unhealthy, it was a pretty healthy chunk of change. And that was unfortunately, of those students who rented the books, there was a large percentage, and I don't, I honestly don't know what that number is, who weren't returning them and then they were charged for the value of the book. So they weren't necessarily fined, they just, if you rent a car and you don't return it, you're gonna buy the car, basically. And that's, yeah, so it's your, but now it's gotten a lot better. I think it was because it was a new program for us or, or what?
So students do have the option of changing their minds and buying, buying the book?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And they often come back and return the book after we've charged them, right? Well, they, they realize, oh, I didn't wanna buy the book and they bring it back.
Well, the other thing about it too is if they rent a new book, they get to buy it for a used book price because they used it. So it's something that we haven't figured out, but we can't figure out because it's in fact used, how can we, you know?
Marsha, Dr. Mina, please.
I was wondering how, um, how are, where do we stand, stand in the larger marketplace? Were we able to lower the cost below the big, the big guys like, I guess, Amazons in that space and other people?
That, it was Amazon that we based our pricing on. So in fact, there were a couple of books that we realized it would take even more than two years to pay off because Amazon can buy, I mean, it's just obvious, you know, they're gonna explain Amazon. In two thousand and eleven, Amazon started renting digital texts. And then I think it was two thousand and fourteen when they started sending out, there started to be signs that they were gonna start renting physical textbooks. that they were gonna start renting physical textbooks. And then, we had this great idea to start this rental program, and then Amazon.
Started doing it right about the same time.
Right about the same time. So, we do still try very hard to compete with those lower prices or make our price point those lower prices as much as we can, but it's tough, they probably can buy.
Ahead on convenience and maybe the knowledge of what the professors want a little bit ahead of anyone else?
We're still working on getting those adoptions in on time so that we can source, it's kind of a sourcing thing. As soon as we get the adoptions in, as soon as we know what textbook you wanna use, we can go out and find it used somewhere in the United States. They actually literally start disappearing because most colleges are starting at the same time. So, we're competitive in that manner. I'm gonna be just honest and say we cannot compete with Amazon. I don't know if anyone really can, unfortunate, unfortunately, or fortunately, if you're shopping, I suppose. But our margins are, I mean, if you look at the numbers, we're just barely above water. And that's, that's really a lot of the reason why, is we're selling things for a, a price that will allow, or, we're selling product at a price that will get people to come in and buy it at. And it's not always a for-profit business. Margins on a book like this are very low, margin on a, on a reader would be relatively high, so.
Well, as long as Amazon doesn't push us below water, basically.
I think that Amazon, this is just my opinion, I think that Amazon has had the opportunity to do that, and I think that we would be there. All we have to do is adjust to what's going on in the real world, if you will. As, as enrollment lowers, as, as publishers start taking their white-knuckle grips off the fact that this is a digital book. When they say we don't have this digital, it was a digital entry put into the printing press that produced the book, so it doesn't make any sense.
Yes.
But it's very soon, I'm being told by Pearson that it's probably two and a half years that, that there will either be a bill passed or something that says you have to release this. And those price points will be significantly lower, but as long as we can stay ahead of the ball and reduce staff and supplement income with other areas such as, I should've brought you all a hoodie or something, or put a Starbucks in your store, which attracts all these kids in there, and they're studying, and they have a Starbucks on the table, and then they're looking around and going, oh, you really do sell this and that and school supplies.
The other program that has just started, as you know, is the Promise program. And that has impacted our campus store dramatically because if you're a Promise student, you have to get your books to the bookstore, through our bookstore, you can't get them through Amazon. You get them for free through our store. So, that's helped our, you know, our sales dramatically because that whole group of students is going through our campus store. And the foundation is, is paying the campus store for the cost of the books.
The Promise has been a tremendous gift, and they're a great group to work with. But if we wanna bring it to here, right around this time period that we're talking about is when the Promise started, the Promise doesn't allow you to rent a book because they don't need to. They're, they're, it's just not, this book is offered to the student. And interestingly enough, we did a little research, and we found that a lot of the students were raised right, and they'll grab the used book instead of the new book, so it's actually costing the Promise class. But you take the number of Promise students that are coming in at the beginning of a semester and literally reducing it, reducing the potential rental of a book by that many. And you can see that the program's really something that I should've thought of ten years ago. But it's still, we have forty percent of our books are available, and by no means is every student in the Promise program. And we're doing the best we can do with it.
So, a couple of things here, you know, as you all know, you know, if, if a publisher, an author changes, you know, one paragraph in a book, it's a new edition, right? And so, the used book market fades a bit with that. But one of the things that, that's been kinda nice that I've seen here is the faculty really are very, very conscientious about the kinds of books that they're requiring. Sometimes it's just there's no way around it, too calculus, you know, whatever, you've gotta have the book, and you've gotta be able to proceed with that. But in other cases, if you could use readers that are assembled by our duplicating department and those kinds of things, it really saves big money for the students. And, and I'm proud of the faculty that are really working to try to keep the cost of those materials down.
Well, and to that, there are faculty members that have committed to us just verbally that they will use this book if somebody says, I promise to use this book for the next two years, we'll snatch all we can up and rent it.
I remember saying that, yeah.
But you have to have, you have to, you have to have that commitment because all of a sudden, we bought it, and then if you change your mind in a semester, we only got twenty-five dollars.
I just wanna say, I really supported making this investment, and I'm glad it's paid off and it's been really successful. But I know this might be hard to do, maybe some student project can do this, but is there a way to look at the amount of money we've invested into this program compared to the money we've saved students? And look at the return on that? Because, not like the return for us, but we probably saved a lot of people a lot of money for a little bit of money that we put into it to get it started, is there a way to get that number?
I'm sure there is a way, yeah, we could, we'll work on that. That was one direction that I didn't think of approaching it. It's very difficult to follow this particular program's numbers because some students didn't return the book, some students, when they went to return it, they bought it and ended up in a different category. And, but that approach is a good approach, we'll see what we can do.
So, if there's no more questions about the, the rental program, Paul's gonna move on to the remodel, which is also exciting, you think, happening in the campus store?
So, the remodel, last time I spoke with you was when we were introducing the idea of the remodel. I did a PowerPoint in the other room. And so, the remodel is completed in July two thousand and seventeen, it took about ten months. The total cost was three point seven, which ended up being about a hundred thousand over budget, or three percent. And actually, that is actually pretty good because when there were, there was about two hundred thousand dollars in unforeseen repairs that needed to be made as related to the codes not necessarily being completely followed when the building was actually built. So, I almost had a heart attack, but then what we did was we restructured what we were gonna do in our remodel. We took a bunch of the things off that we were gonna do in the remodel. And while a hundred and ten isn't close enough for me, three percent isn't so bad. So, we ended up three percent over. Most of the remodel was in the interior. We added a deck in the exterior to offer more seating for students to study. We added a Starbucks coffee, and we brought, most importantly, brought, well, not most importantly, but importantly, we brought the facility up to current code. We also redesigned a retail office warehouse and textbook floor. The old store had terrible flow, it didn't allow a customer to walk by most of the product. And now, the way I have it set up, you fortunately or unfortunately have to walk by almost everything that we sell between the front door and the register, but it's a nice walk.
That would be Starbucks.
Exactly, that's why they build lanes, yes. So, we increased the efficiency of the traffic flow. The new layout for registers helped to decrease the wait time. We added space for student study areas, both indoor and outdoors. We added an area that's kind of somewhat like a FedEx Kinko's where a student or staff can come in and finish a project that they have, whether it's a three-hole punch, or whiteout, or putting it in a binder, or a presentation format, we're there to help with that. And then we're gonna move on to Starbucks. The big trend in campus stores, I'm gonna just go ahead and say it, survival is to marry these types of business units with the campus store. And the main reason is to create a hub, which in turn creates some sales. If you're not ever going into the, if you don't have a reason to go in the campus store, we have to find reasons for you to go in the campus store. I worked at Starbucks for twelve years, so I'm kinda impartial to the, kinda like them. So, we opened that in July, there's extensive training and product knowledge involved. But we're really focusing on prod, uh, product quality because Starbucks is, and we can't have a drink that tastes different here than it does at any of one of their stores. We're focused on marketing efforts, sales are increasing quite a bit. We're at about a positive four hundred K for the last six months.
Forty, forty, that would be great.
Four hundred sounded good. That would solve all our problems. And then there's a third place concept, which we're trying to provide there, which is basically that you're either at home, you're at work, or you're somewhere in between. And they don't, interestingly enough, include play in that. But I guess related to home and work is somewhere where you can sit and relax and get either work done, or just relax and have a cup of coffee with a friend or a colleague. And so, that's the kind of atmosphere that we're trying to produce there.
I just wanted to add something, you know, Paul's pretty modest here. He worked at Starbucks, but it wasn't like he was, you know, making coffee as a barista. He was a regional.
Although I could.
I'm sure you probably could, but he was a regional manager over multiple units. And so, had a lot of great experience from the, from the management side of how you actually make money running these operations. And so, I just wanted to brag on you a little bit with that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, the campus store, the new model, where we're going, the campus store is focused on student and staff and faculty support. We have created an academic hub for students, which allows students to enjoy a comfortable, welcoming, quiet space to study or relax. In the past, there was about seven weeks total, combining the rush periods of each semester, that the students came in, and in between those seven weeks, there was very little business happening. Now, we're seeing an increase in traffic throughout the year. Gift students and staff supplies, sportswear and apparel are all increasing year over year through strategic marketing efforts and just because of the fact that they're actually coming into the store for other reasons now. And we're gonna continue to expand on those offerings and try our hardest to offset the decrease in actual text purchases with an increase in collegiate apparel, gift items. We introduced a healthy version of prepackaged snacks and healthy versions of canned and bottled drinks, and, and those are doing very well. We have also seen an increase in students coming in and actually bringing their project to the counter and saying, help me put it together. And we have staff behind the counter that'll help them put their projects together, so it's kinda nice. And we as, we have also put a big focus, ten, while seventy, in a gross sense, seventy-two percent of our sales are textbooks, and in a net sense, about sixty-eight percent of our net are textbooks. And then in that pie chart, I probably should've made it, the next largest selling item, which takes up about ten percent, are the office supplies and extra non-required student supplies. So, that, that little kind of staples business that we have going on is doing very well. We're finally getting a lot more staff to understand that if the college gives you money to spend on office supplies and you spend it here, it goes back to the college. It's difficult because admittedly, you can sit at your desk and shop on Amazon, and it'll come with a free donut or whatever the heck is there. But the fact of the matter is, is the college, this money then immediately leaves the college, it's gone, and comes back in a form of a pencil. At least if they spend it at the store, the money can come back into the college.
And that's an educational process. I mean, we have, we have departments and things that, over the years, have purchased apparel and other things off-site and for the reasons that Paul's explaining. And it's an educational process to get them so that they come back and they, they be with us here for all the great reasons that Paul's talking about, and purchase here as opposed to somewhere else. They might go get a better price for it, but it's not coming back to us.
And then changing the culture of the campus store. We're trying to create, I think we're being fairly successful at creating a positive, attractive, and welcoming retail environment that offers our clientele a sense of belonging and pride in SBCC. We're trying to build a sense of community within and around the store for students, clubs, staff, and faculty by offering all of the above and more, but also by building a trust through actual real customer service. We're hosting events such as Grad Fest, Halloween events, we have Club Day coming up, fall and spring sale events. So, we're trying to get the college to recognize the campus store as a place to hold an event, which seems to be working very well. We have created a, a space for selling textbooks that is, but it's kind of like a concierge service. So, when I first started, our shrink was extremely high, and part of shrink involves actual theft, unfortunately. But it also is because somebody didn't check the product incorrectly on the dock and a bunch of other reasons. So, we created a concierge service, we call it, which basically says that all the textbooks are now behind a wall. And so, if you wanna get your textbook, you give us your schedule, and we go and get your textbook for you, make sure it's the right one on the schedule, and then we put it in a bag that's censored, and it, we make sure it gets to the cash register and goes. We've found great success with that. We've, we're less than half of what the shrink was before we started this program. So, it's, it's really worked out.
Sounds like a good service to students, too.
Plus, I mean, somebody's helping them, somebody's guaranteed to be standing there to help them instead of wandering off and that.
That's great.
I just had a question on the, the, you know, I was there in the fall, obviously, it was busy, we were getting books, and I was in line, I was that mother that said, go to class, and so I was in line for like a really, really long time. It, you know, and you just go upstairs and you go down the stairs, and then you're down, and then people are trying to get the books that they ordered, and is there, you know, as you look at systems and stuff, is there a way to ease that bottleneck? Or, I mean, I bought a bunch of stuff, I was like, writing pencils and bookmarks, and you know, like, time to get up there.
Thank you.
It's a great add-on. But it, it's sort of, it's probably just the first couple of days, right?
It is, and what, what, what we're trying to do, we send out very many emails. Unfortunately, with what happened in December and January, we had, it's unfortunate that that happened, but we had more time to send out more emails to students and say, hey, come in here now. We even offered for a week, ten percent off of your total value, and some of these margins on here are only twenty percent or twenty-three percent. We couldn't, it just, it, the first week is, when you're in college, you just don't get out of bed until you have to. I don't know, you know, we, I will say that I had that line down to fifteen minutes, and if you're saying it's long, I'll talk to the supervisor.
No, I'm not complaining, I didn't have a picture of what it was, it was literally the first week of fall, but I was just wondering in terms of, actually, the students that have to go to class, you know, except I stood in line for my daughter, she went to class, but I thought, if you're crashing a class and you've already been in line for an hour and fifteen minutes, like, you have to go at some point. And so, I kinda wanted to hold the line for everybody, but they were Promise students, and you couldn't pay for their books, it's likely you have their voucher. So, anyway, I just, you know, it.
Well, we're, I'm always working on it, and people think I'm pretty ridiculous down there because I come from Starbucks, and we couldn't have lines, they wouldn't allow us. So, I was always running going, three people a minute, or whatever. So, I tried to bring that here, and we got it down to about fifteen minutes. But apparently, since I've been doing other things, I, well, we have eight registers open, we don't. We don't even have enough staff to staff them. We have to hire some temps just for the week and a half, so-
Just the rush.
What about like, you know, at Nordstrom, they just come up to you and like your little handheld? Cause the anniversary sales are really busy and so, like, don't get stressed. And they just, it's like a handheld wireless thing and they just take your credit card.
It's a great idea. Another unfortunate thing and a reason why we need to continue to save money is the archaic software system that we have in there. When I called them last year to see if we could get our registers on an iPad with a square, they didn't even have that technology yet. And every, not roach coaches, but food trucks are even doing it all over time. But that's unfortunately how behind the textbook industry, behind-the-scenes technology is. We do have a company called Sequoia who just got bought by Banner, Blackboard.
Blackboard.
Blackboard. And Sequoia was a software program that we were looking at, which was the most comprehensive program that we could find to change our software over to. They're pretty expensive, but they were actually a software company that built the software for this business. All the other opportunities that you had in the past and which we have were people who sold books who tried to figure out how to make the software for it. And it didn't work that direction. So, it's something that I plan on bringing up, by the way. Within a short period of time, because, but now that Sequoia is owned by Blackboard, Blackboard is running all, I think, all the POS.
Door locks.
Everything here and it is such a great, the inventory system is wonderful. It makes sense and-
And he's referring to food service and campus store, but there's that type of-
So, literally, any outlet will have the same software throughout campus.
The future.
Which is the future.
I was just wondering, do you have a sense on the traffic, the customer traffic compared, comparing campus center, library, bookstore, that kind of thing? What sort of student use are they getting?
The demographic or the numbers?
The library is very impressive, I know, but I don't actually know campus.
I don't really, one, one I have off the top of my head, cause I just read it, is that of the fifteen hundred promised students that came in this fall, there were thirty-seven hundred transactions, so they came in twice. So, more than twice, but, uh, as far as the actual numbers, um, I could find that. That's all available.
That'd be just interesting, cause I remember the, um, the library is what, five thousand a day when they're busy? Something like that, yeah. And that's, that's a lot of students using the library. You know, a sense of how our buildings are being used and-
Sure.
Similarly, with food service, yeah. What are, what's our traffic?
I visited the bookstore this week, actually. I had a Starbucks, sat down for a while. And I thought, cause I hadn't been in there really in a long time. And, um, I thought when you were gonna do the remodel, I thought the original plan said that it was gonna be like a, a student study area downstairs and that got flipped and all this stuff. And I think the end result is great. I was really, when I, when I did go downstairs and I saw that all the textbooks were behind the wall, and I thought, oh, this is fine for now, but when you start the semester, the lines must go clear out the door halfway down the hill at the beach because everybody's gotta stand there and wait for somebody to gather all their books. Plus, they gotta check out and it's gonna take forever. So, if you've solved that problem, or at least you're aware of it and trying to solve it, making some headway, I applaud you.
We have solved it. And the way we solved it-
I was really concerned when I saw that. I went, "God, I'm a student trying to buy, buy, buy my textbooks with this kind of setup."
And the way we solved it, you might've noticed, is that the, the unit that the cash register is, that's sitting, that the cash register is sitting on, which blocks the door from the students going into the textbook area, is on wheels. So, during every rush, we wheel it away and students are allowed to go in and get their own books. Most of the product, unfortunately, the product does disappear. Most of it doesn't disappear until about the third week. Um, a lot of people realize that they really need to buy a book, they need to buy a book for that class. And people who think this way unfortunately don't like to do that in a crowd. So, it rushes Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of almost every semester. And then, Thursday morning, there's, it's blocked off. So, that's a good point. It's not kept behind the wall at all times.
I, I don't know how much work you, I did notice one other thing that just caught my attention. I'm just an old guy and I've been around for a while. Something caught my attention when I walked through the store. When I walked in and I looked around, all the merchandise on the floor, seems like all I saw was sweatshirts with hoods and baseball hat collections that all said SBCC on it. And I just, and I thought, well, I'll buy a windbreaker or something while I'm here. And I never did find any windbreakers or anything that I would wanna wear, so I didn't buy anything. And I know, you're not marketing to me, but I just noticed that it was really sort of limited. I mean, you had every color in the rainbow, except you only had one thing. I recall being in Beijing in, um, somewhere around nineteen ninety and, um, you know, I went into one of their people's compartment stores and they had, God, they had tennis shoes. And they had a lot of them in every size you can imagine, but you had no choice. You'd buy their tennis shoe when you were airfoot. And that's kinda what I looked like in there. I go, "Well, at least I have a choice of color." It's not like Henry Ford. You got any color you want, as long as it's black. But I, I'm sure you have a reason for having the inventory skewed or limited like that. I don't know what it was, the last time I was in there was about graduation day and I needed, uh, for the ceremony here, and I needed a white tip, uh, fill, fill a pen. You don't have any. And you still don't have any. Today I looked, uh, this week, I'm going, maybe, I guess they don't sell and the students don't use them, but-
That would be the reason for the pen, probably. However, to your first point, I am un, I, we were then unsuccessful in making that journey through all of our product like I bragged about earlier because that product is available. It's just, you had to turn left after the turn-
I walked around circles three times. I never saw-
And, uh, windbreakers are on the, the racks that are right inside. You have to do an immediate left.
I did. I looked there.
We'll go shopping together. Lindsay, take us home and wrap this up for us.
So, I'll try again, but I did, no, I did look right inside where you were talking.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you know, one thing we have to all consider is that what is the largest demographic coming in?
Right, no, I'm not being critical. I'm just trying to see.
No, but I mean, even with that pen, it kinda surprises me we don't have one. I believe you, but I guess all I could say is that-
I was kinda surprised.
That I would, I would be, I would be surprised, too. I'm surprised we don't have it. But all I can say is possibly the gal who's in charge of it didn't sell them and-
I, obviously, but I, I was surprised. So, I hope it's working for you. I just throw in what I, what I observed. And my question was, you're looking at all this stuff, so-
Sure.
If you're tracking it somehow, um, it'll stay like it is or it'll get better according to what the real world is.
Well, and it needs to continue to grow, especially the areas you're talking about. Most importantly, the areas you're talking about to offset the textbook.
I, I did notice some, you know, books downstairs that I might like to read. Or unfortunately, I'd read on all that you had on the screen.
Well, Craig, we'll have Lindsay wrap us up and then-
But I thought, you know, it's a bookstore. I thought you'd, I'd see some of those around where they're selling the coffee and have the tables.
It's an idea.
I don't know, just you're, it just looked different to me.
Sure.
Okay. And that's not a bad thing. I just noticed that it was different looking at. Not what I expected.
Oh, okay. The numbers.
So, to go forward with the historical numbers here on the campus store, um, the campus store is not terribly unlike food service where their kinda sweet spot is to make about a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on what's, what's going on. So, to give you an idea of where they've been at for the last few years, you can see it up there on the slide. Last year, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, was an anomaly because that was the year that we were in the swing space location. We, we didn't have our brick and mortar, uh, building to sell all of our products. So, we were actually happy with this. We thought this was pretty darn good because we were living out of a couple of portables. We didn't have most of our product for sale and it was the year that it actually rained in the winter and we had to set up this makeshift, you know, system to make sure everything didn't get wet. It was, uh, yeah, it was quite a mess, um, but we did, we did okay. That was about what we had estimated we would lose during that year and, and so, we were happy with, with the result, actually. But that was just an anomaly during the swing space and going forward, we won't, we aren't expecting that kind of, uh, kind of a decline in those, uh, in that area. So, for profits going forward, what our goals for the campus store is, we are hoping to, to turn a profit this year. We're expecting about fifty thousand dollars and then you can see seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars going forward. So, not terribly different from food service. Again, the, the goal is to be self-sustaining. We don't rely on anything from the general fund for the campus store and just try to, to make enough money to be able to save something, put aside some money specifically for the software that we talked about earlier. That's something that we really have our sights on doing, so it would help in a lot of different areas. So, that's, that's it on the dollars. If you have any questions on the dollars, Paul can wrap them and go quick on them.
I'm, I was just wondering, um, on the net profit loss, the, um, the historic one, you have the fund equity balances and the current one, six point seven. Um, how much of that is cash and, um, as opposed to like inventory? And then, does that subtract out the three point seven?
I brought you the answer, cause it's complex, so you can study it and I can pass it around if you want. I thought you might, it might be something you're interested in. So, keep in mind, I, I know-
Such a good teacher, you know, your students.
I know.
You should pass it around. But does it subtract the three point seven?
The three point seven of the, the investment?
Remodel.
Yeah, yeah.
Is already subtracted from the six point seven?
Yeah, that's, that's after that, yes, absolutely.
After it or before?
The remodel was complete at that point in time.
That's what I thought. So, six point seven includes a subtraction for three point seven.
Well, the three point seven is now an asset, so it's within fund equity balance. That's why I brought you the whole document, cause it's complex.
So, it's in the-
So, the campus store-
Counting it differently.
Yeah, the campus store, unlike food services or the general fund, the accounting for it is, is like a typical business, typical for-profit, non-governmental business. So, it feels very different. When you look at the, the balance here, this isn't a reserve balance. This isn't an ending fund balance. It's an equity balance in the business. So, there's a lot of different numbers that go into that. And that's why it's, it's confusing and complex. You know, in the past, someone may have given you a cash balance number that looks very different than this. Um, and, you know, so, anytime you look at the campus store, if, if you're not looking at this detailed sheet, you may be talking oranges to apples here. So, I don't know if you wanna spend too much more time on it, but it is, it is all in there. Explains that. It's very different. It's not just a cash balance at all. You've got your inventory, your assets, cash, everything included in there.
This describes it.
Okay, so, the trend analysis for the past six years, the introduction by Amazon of text rentals and sales has deeply cut into the ability to generate revenues. Sales are increasing in office supply, gift apparel, and coffee departments. In FY two thousand sixteen, seventeen, the campus store completed an extensive remodel. The entire fiscal year was spent in swing space with a decline in sales due to the temporary venue, the campus store, and approximately eighty-five percent to prior year sales. This was on that graph that we showed. Trends for the first half of two thousand seventeen, eighteen show an increase in sales in all categories. That said, I just had to throw this in there because we haven't gotten the numbers back yet, but we basically paid a fairly large staff for five weeks that we had to close due, due to the awful things that happened to this town. And, um, so, but we're gonna still work really hard to make that ending number a positive number. Um, future strategy, um, during this time of decreased enrollment, the campus center will con- continue to reduce labor, stay relevant in product line offerings by going to trade shows and doing a lot of research on what students are buying through the groups that we're associated with. Continue to work with fac- faculty on digital materials as well as commitments to rental programs. Focus on this, focus and strategize around the concept of digital first. Basically, what I'm writing here is saying that we are doing a very good job of getting students to buy our product online and not even coming in and standing in line. Um, there are still a lot of things that aren't available online that you have to come in for, but our focus right now is making that as vibrant and user-friendly as we can. A and B, to upload as much of our product onto the website as we can so that people can use that as a cart and actually purchase that product. Offer more reasons for, for the students to come into the store. Um, more events with clubs, more study space. We are looking into adding more study space to what you were saying earlier. Um, we kinda ran out of money at some point and so, we put those reading books down there in the space that we were gonna put in our lounge. Yeah. Um, consider more mixed-use projects. Our first mixed-use project was putting a Starbucks in the store and it's proven to be very successful. I don't want to put any more food service venues on campus until we can figure out exactly what we have here and how to make them profitable. But a trend is to put in a deli and stuff like that, so that may be something way down in the future. And lastly, um, basically, this last point is, I heard a couple of different students come in and say they were so excited about the remodel. Over, I overheard them in conversation saying, "This is like a real college." One student said that. One student said, "This is like a university." And they were just super happy with not the traditional campus store like the one I went to, which had awful colors. We were stuck with awful colors and, and we wanted to build a place where people would walk in and, and go, "Wow, that is cool." And so, we feel like we did it. And I think that in itself is gonna, and is showing that it's increasing business, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. I see that.
Thank you guys and the team and the behind-the-scenes crew that worked on all this. This is very meaningful and informative. So, with that, our item seven point one, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would so move. With enthusiasm.
And adjourned.